I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Dawn to lead us in the pledge.
I'll tell you it's time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome back to school, everybody. Nothing like first day back after a break and joining us in the evening. Let's extend everyone's day a little bit. We appreciate you all being here. Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? All right, hearing none. Any board acknowledgements?
That we extend our condolences to the Danfoss family.
Thank you, Dawn. And anything else? No, all right. Hearing none, moving right along to our consent agenda. Do I maybe have a motion?
Go ahead.
I'm not usually as complete as you are, though. I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, including minutes from the last three meetings.
That works for me.
Ah, the way it is, as well as the warrants and general fund expenditures as presented.
I have a correction to the minutes, so.
Okay.
But go ahead.
And do we pull it then? Can we?
Yep, she can fix it.
Do we have a motion to pull it?
Nope, it's one word. It's on the minutes of 3:28, line 160, where we went into executive session and it says for personal reasons, and I think it should be for personnel reasons.
Personal.
Says I made the motion and I'm going, I didn't have any personal reasons.
All right.
But that's your correction.
Okay.
So you can approve them as correction.
Okay, terrific. So do I have a second on the consent agenda?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? I pass this five zero with that correction. Thank you.
Nice eagle eye in the reading. I went right past that one.
Oh, wait, was I not supposed to be leading this part of the meeting? Board reorganization is, okay. Sorry if I wasn't supposed to be that part.
So this is a welcome back, everybody. We'll do proper introductions in a moment, but this is the time of the year, the first meeting after the annual meeting to reorganize for the, to the board to elect a chair for the 1617 school year, a vice chair and a clerk. So I'm going to lead this part of the meeting and then pass it over to the new chair, whoever that might be, who's either newly elected or reorganized.
Okay, do we?
Wow, this is easy.
So, yes.
Why don't I start with any nominations for board chair for the 1617 school year?
Oh, I know, Kim Gleason.
I second.
Dawn, motion. Rachel, second. Any discussion on Kim's nomination for this coming school year as board chair?
I don't think we could do any better.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
No votes? Congratulations, Gleason.
I am honored to continue to serve as your chair, and I am so grateful for all of your continued service and support. I will take nominations for our vice chair.
I nominate Dan House as our vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? I pass this five zero. Thanks, Dan. And nominations for our board clerk?
I think Cashel would make, or I think Dawn would make a great job. Tapping my shoulder. I don't know if she'd be open to it, but I think you would do a great job at it.
Do, you know?
It's fine.
You'd be willing to?
Sure.
Okay. Now that Rachel has nominated Dawn and...
I don't want her to hit me, so I got her.
No, 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 I wouldn't. I just think you've got good eagle eyes. I think you could do it.
All right, any discussion? Dawn, are we good? Does that work for you? Awesome. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Just in case people were wondering if this had been staged. It wasn't.
The job description that goes with this.
You will coordinate with Kim really on minutes, but, and I know that Rachel is happy to help support the transition.
Absolutely.
All right.
Sorry, I really didn't mean...
It's fine. It's not a problem.
I do remember getting roped into that when I first came on the board, and you're sort of most, I know, you probably roped me into it.
Traditionally, it was. The newest board member always got appointed.
It was, the newbie, got it.
And quite honestly, you do a very good job at looking over the minutes, so I really, it's, it's in all honesty that I think you would do an excellent job.
I would be honored to serve.
Thank you. And again, thank you all for all of the work we do collectively. I appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over without any further delay to Mark to introduce all of our guests and bring us through again what is one of, I think, our most enjoyable parts of the work we do is get to see how intimately you guys know our kids and how we are planning for progress of all students. So thank you, guys, for the work you do on that front, and thank you, Mark, for bringing along our esteemed staff.
Well, we're happy that they're all joining us, and I think we're all refreshed, aren't we? Having a week off. Supposed to have very little children at home, so I especially appreciate those of you who do are here tonight. Some of us don't have any kids at home, like me, so I have no reasons for not to want to be here. But I want to start by introducing once again, you know well, our leadership team. Once again, they're a very big part of this progress report that we do at this time of the year. But also want to extend a genuine thank you to teacher colleagues, Melanie Savio, who you'll get to meet later tonight. You've met Melanie before. Her colleague behind her, kindergarten teacher, Joanne Row, Jo, Ellen Rowley. And I believe we're expecting John Senate off of a soccer field or lacrosse field at some point, representing his colleagues from EMS. We also have Eric Mortensen, who's a student data management specialist, if I have that correct. Eric, it works for me.
It works for me, too.
And Eric plays an integral role in helping us unpack some of the data and format it in such a way that we can get the most salient pieces of information out of it. So his role tonight is important, as important as all, everyone else's on this evening. So I want to set some context. I have a very small speaking role tonight, which is appropriate because really the work that's happening and that we should be most proud of is the work that's happening in the schoolhouse, supported by district and building leadership. So we've come to realize, and I think that you appreciate, that when we look at data, it's more than just walls and numbers. It's really about, I'm talking about the, the learning journey of children. We also believe that it's not about a race to the finish line, that it really is a journey through 10 years of time here in Essex Town. We experience, kids experience slow starts, they experience times where learning doesn't seem to be happening, they experience quick bursts. There's, there's frustration, but there's also many times for, for celebration as well. And I think you'll hear that in some of the stories that we share with you tonight, especially coming from Melanie, Jo Ellen and John. It's also important to point out that every, every teacher and every staff person in this district works their hardest to meet the needs of all kids. And even when we think we're working the hardest and putting all the effort into it, kids just don't seem to be able to demonstrate that they're at the standard. And that's frustrating for the student, it's frustrating for the parents, and it's clearly frustrating for the staff that put their heart and soul into meeting their needs. So when we talk about children tonight and we see that they've had some amazing growth opportunities in this particular grade level, it does not suggest that they were not experiencing success earlier in their career, from the teacher who said goodbye to them in one grade and passing them off to the next. So I don't want you, and I know you wouldn't, hopefully viewers at home would not at all believe that child's success in any given year is because we weren't working hard the year before that. And I think that's an important concept for us to understand and get our heads wrapped around. And I've used the metaphor many times in our presentations, which is quite apt, and that is every garden, every flower in the garden grows at different rates, and the factors that contribute to a child's growth are varied. But it's not the lack of hard work on the part of educators and school leaders to, to help all children learn. The last thing I'll hear tonight, I've, I got to do some previewing of some of the work that's coming forward tonight, is that our kids, every single one of them here, three things every day of their time here in the classroom, that the work that they're doing is very important, that teachers and families believe in them, and they believe they can meet those standards, and lastly, we're never going to give up on them. And I think what's represented tonight is a team approach, not unlike the team that you have here as a board. You couldn't accomplish the things as a board if it was not working together. And I think you'll see tonight by evidence of the stories you'll hear, that it really does take a lot of us working hard every day for all kids and their needs. And I'm really proud of the work that, that teachers have done in that regard. So that's my quick context setting. I, too, Kim, am very excited about where we are this time of year. We could flip to slide one. Thanks, Ellen. And I'm going to set a little bit more context, then I'm going to pass it on. Want me to do the driving as well? Do you trust me?
I...
That was a low question there.
She did give you.
As soon as she passed me, the bat, this thing fell off, so I'm like a train wreck.
You're skilled in so many other areas. Maybe not the liquor.
So the context is this. We have three assessment windows in the district, sort of. This is the winter assessment window. I think it could be considered a summative evaluation, basically an assessment of where kids have been. And it's, it's all, all the assessments that we conduct during these windows are part of a local assessment plan. By law, in 1998, it was passed through Act 60, that we have a local assessment plan, which contributes to excellence and equity across the state of Vermont. So all districts have a local assessment plan, as you know, and not all local assessment plans are alike. What I'm proud of is that through teacher input and leadership work, this assessment plan, if you will, has changed over the years because we want to make sure, most importantly, there are two things that are happening, that the tests or the assessments that are conducted are valid, that in fact, they are testing, we want, we, it is testing, assessment on what we want kids to be able to know and be able to do. So the validity is a really important principle in any local assessment plan. The other is reliability, that no matter, at that time of the year, will the kid be able to demonstrate his or her ability under different testing conditions using that same assessment? So it can't be just a shot in the dark. We want to see the same picture of that student's progress over, over different types of testing situations and different observers. And so this local assessment plan is important because it shows where kids have been, allows us to make some adjustments, but we need to make sure, absolutely sure, that it's valid and reliable. What the nice piece about tonight's presentation, having Jo Ellen and Melanie and John here, is that as important as a summative is that, is about the informative assessment piece. Assessment means that the Latin derivative is to sit beside. And so good, rich assessment is real time, authentic, by, by collecting data, by talking to kids, by observing their performance. And those assessments that Jo Ellen and Melanie and their colleagues and John are doing every day, in fact, is probably even more rich because it's being able to make those adjustments based on what they're seeing today to, to make the adjustment for tomorrow. So what we'll talk about tonight, in addition to the walls and the data, the empirical side, again, is the story, the learning journey, based on, on the, on the work that teachers are doing in the classroom. So that's sort of the context of this. It's nothing new, but we really hold up this local, our local assessment plan, and more importantly, the performance-based assessments that teachers are doing is probably being the most important thing that, that we can be doing with kids. It's about curriculum, it's about instruction, and it's about assessing regularly to see if our, our efforts are working. So I'm through talking. I'm going to pass it on for the next 60 minutes. Hold on, we're going to have some fun and I'll share some information with you.
Just to piggyback off of what Mark said, a local assessment plan tends to benchmark progress throughout the year, sort of in a more universal manner. So in other words, all third grade kids do this, all fourth grade kids do this, and in the classroom, you're going to have things that happen, as Mark said, on a day-to-day basis. Both are really, really important because one gives us program information and actually makes sure that we're not missing anybody along the way. So I think that's, you know, both are extremely important to the whole picture of the child. And as you know, Essex Town has been collecting data on our kids for a long, long time before I got here. So we have 12 years' worth of data sitting in VCAT that we can go back to and look at the historical pieces and the programatics as well. I put this slide in here mainly because as people talk, you'll hear different words. You've heard me say these before, but a local assessment plan takes into account many different types of assessments. Again, each one does its own job, and so you've heard me talk about screening assessment tools, and we're going to show you an example of some of these, the way they would look in VCAT. But a screening tool is just that, it really screens out the kids who may be experiencing difficulty. It also will screen out the kids who maybe already know it and really are beyond that particular tool, they, they know it all kind of thing. Basically, it's a gross measure, and it's, it allows you to say to a group of kids, of these kids, who already know it, who don't, I need to find out more information about this group of kids. So you begin to assign your, your teacher hours or your assessment hours in some different ways, so that you can make better use of time. They usually take less time, and they don't give great information, which sounds a little weird, other than the fact that they tell you somebody might have a problem, or somebody might know it all. So that, what a screener tells you is go back and take a second look, but it kind of splits the crowd a little bit along that way. So we use screening tools in a couple of places, in mathematics, and we also use screening tools in literacy, starting at grade three. We use the Gates McGinnity, which is a kind of a quicker, it's a more traditional test, and then we do more things with kids who need to know more. A diagnostic assessment is usually what is, it's the tool that follows a screening assessment. So if you were to determine that five out of 20 kids had a difficulty in reading, you wouldn't just say, yep, know that. Now you really want to know what you have to do. So the whole idea of teaching literacy is a very comprehensive, organic, multifaceted piece of information that kids need, so you really need to dig in and find out what the group of kids needs. The formative assessment tools, you won't usually find those on a local assessment plan. It's not that you can't look at some of the things on the local assessment plan formatively, but it's the idea that a formative assessment actually takes place in the middle of instruction. So when you're doing your lesson, you ask that one spin question, and you get that feeling right away that I've been talking to the wall and I need to go back, you know, kind of stuff. But it's, it's those things you're doing right in the moment, and then you actually, with a formative assessment tool, you actually change what you were thinking to do next based on the response you just had from whatever it was. That could be observations, could be a question, could be an exit card, could be a lot of different ways that, that teachers kind of pick that up. And then, as you've heard me talk in the last couple of years, the newest addition to the local assessment plan is the fact that the state is requiring performance assessment tools. So it's no longer okay just to do a checklist and say you can read and not read, but you have to actually show how you would do that in a real context. So in science, we're doing performance assessments, mathematics, and actually language arts as well, and that is a new requirement to local assessment plans. But they're actually, they're the place where you actually get to see whether the rubber really hits the road, like can the child apply their reading skills to a real task and come up with a response for it, too, as well. So those words are circling around in, in probably all the conversation that we do tonight. The other thing that we wanted to just make sure that you understood in some respects, this idea of sitting beside is really important, but it's also the idea that we've created a very collegial atmosphere in all of our buildings, a collaborative one. Our PLCs are really vibrant right at the moment, so when teachers gather data, they gather themselves and have review meetings, whether it's with their principal or whether it's with their PLC. So they're talking a lot about what they're noticing about their kids. Because we have more consistent timelines for our instruction, math units are taught at a similar time, teachers can come together with a common assessment and have a big conversation about what they're noticing and how they feel they may need to ramp up their, their conversations with their students in different ways. So these data review meetings are happening. VCAT is a tool, and again, we'll show you a little bit about that. Principals often will have needs assessment meetings, initially with their teachers or in small group. I actually have needs assessment meetings with each of the principals three times a year, too, because I'm looking at the broad data. And so my question is, did you notice that you have this group of kids? What's happening for them? You know, that kind of thing, whether it's high or low or in between. We, we just have conversations. So we have many layers to it. I've already talked about professional learning communities. And then this whole idea of response, so your multi-system tiered systems of support are thinking about what's the system or the work that needs to happen next for kiddos that may have a need, whether high or low, it doesn't really matter. So this idea of having interventionists who can help the kids who are really kind of tangled, but also this team strategy plan is where, say Melanie's third grade group or Jo Ellen's kindergarten group will wrap their heads together around how do they support a kiddo in a classroom? And it's not going to see somebody else, it's really what am I going to do in the classroom and what can my colleagues help me with? And then the educational support team is sort of the next step, where now you're saying, you know what, I tried all this, I'm not sure that I'm the one, I've got to find somebody else who can help me with it. So that's your next tier in the system. But we have, the data is around and there's lots of conversations. I would say we're really using our data, so it isn't just going into the hopper and not coming out or being used. And I think that's the part that's kind of fascinating, as you listen to teachers talk about the first work they do. Segue to Eric.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. So part of the work that I do is both with Ellen, with the leadership team and with teachers around how to use VCAT in analyzing student data. This is just a sample data set that shows three different assessments that were given to a group of students. This is just, this isn't a classroom, this is grade three, and this is all that would fit on the screen right now. But if you see, the first two columns show scores for Gates McGinnity, which, as Ellen said earlier, is a screener. The second is, is the DRA II, the fall administration of the DRA II, and then the most recent winter administration of the DRA II. And this particular data set gives us some, it gives us some questions that we need to ask. One of the things that we started asking teachers to do last year is to administer the DRA II to those students who score at a stay nine-five or below. A five is actually considered proficient to the gates, but because the gates is a screener, it really tells who's, who really gets it and who doesn't get it. And those kids in the middle, they may or may not get it. So if you look at the fourth student from the bottom, oops. Ellen, it's running away.
You ran away from Ellen.
Make it stop, make it stop.
He's Ellen, who's good at the liquor.
We got it, there we go. So if you look at that fourth student from the bottom...
Use the laser.
This is like Eric's worst nightmare.
The fourth student from the bottom got a five, which is a, which is a proficiency three on the gates. And if you go over to the DRA, that kiddo scored a one in both of the next administrations of the DRA II. So that should, that should give a teacher something to think about.
Can you use your, excuse me, can you use the laser to just show what you just talked about?
Yeah, push button. So it's the smallest ones. So this kiddo got a, a five, so he got a three, he or she. And then when they took the DRA, they got a one, and then they got a one again. And actually, they didn't show any independent growth in either of the administrations either. So the DRA should hopefully give the teacher some information about what is, what's the student struggling with? Are they struggling with comprehension? Are they struggling with reading at an appropriate pace? So having a tool that so kind of blatantly shows these, this type of information is really great and allows for some excellent conversations between colleagues.
Quick question, in the state, what's the range?
The state needs to go to nine.
So one to nine, and roughly what percent would be five and lower? Roughly what percent are going to take the DRA?
Probably like 60 to 70 percent. We have each class as...
I can tell you exactly.
Okay. So 96 of our roughly 148 students in third grade, 96 of those students met or exceeded the gates. So we're not expected to, not required to take the DRA. Some teachers decide to assess all their kids, regardless of their score on the gates, which I like. So, and you know, again, the gates is a screener, so it doesn't give us a lot of meat for the reading. So I think if you look back at the history of a student's reading data, you might decide, ooh, you know, when you're looking back at second grade or first grade, you might have seen slower progress, and even though the gates might say grade level, you might decide, ooh, I, I think I need to do a DRA and dig a little deeper for this kiddo. As Eric said, we, we increased it to the five because just knowing how screeners work, the five would be the iftiest number of all, you know what I mean? Because it sits right on the cusp, and so, well, we found the first year we did it, which was last year or the year before, I can't remember, last year?
Last year.
Was, I had my fingers crossed, holding my breath, because teachers had to do more assessments with the DRA. But what happened was, there was a body of kids in almost every grade, in every grade level, that scored the five, which would say they would be green on that chart, that green is, you know, go, kind of stuff, but they scored lower in the DRA and really didn't. And the DRA is a performance assessment, they have to read a whole text, they have to respond to that whole text. So it's not just what the gates, the gates is a very traditional paragraph, bubble, 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 you know, kind of thing.
The other interesting thing that happened is not only do kids score below proficiency, they also, we also got some fours. So if you look here, there's a kiddo who scored a five, which would have put them middle of the pack, and he's got a four on the DRA.
And then the other reason why we wanted to put this up is we use our diagnostic to follow those kids right from the fall, but what you'll also notice is that when you go to the winter DRA, all the greens. So that's what we're watching for, is the kids who started out sort of yellow and are moving to green are showing that they're proficient at this particular point in the grade level. So we have lots of kids, and that's the movement you're seeing on the data walls, okay? So when you look at the literacy data information from three through eight, that's what, why the numbers are getting bigger into the proficiency piece, because they're showing what they can do in the DRA.
Now, would it be possible to see this for the, for an individual child, say, okay, what do they, what, what grade is this three? What, what do they do in first grade? What do they do in second grade? You would pull that.
Go to eighth grade all the way back. Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, it is actually pretty cool. And what this allows us to also do when we have our needs assessment meetings is we're looking at, are these kiddos on some sort of a plan? Have we, have we caught these kids? You know, what supports are they getting? And if they are on a plan and getting supports, maybe an EST plan or a team strategy plan, and they're still not showing movement, we need to take other steps to find out why. Why is this kiddo not showing, showing progress?
So when you think about just some, again, always thinking about the merger that's coming up. When we think about VCAT as a tool, I like the way that you've described it, Eric, these systems are not just to warehouse data, it's to inform our, our thinking around program development and instructional changes that might need to happen. So it's really important that that be a really, first and foremost, a criterion that we use when we think about, if not VCAT, then what? And what, again, I think it's, you know the data really well because it's accessible and it's understandable and it's providing you, I would hope, good information about kids' learning. I think I saw John Senate walk in, did I?
Yes.
Hi, John.
So if we were sitting in Essex Junction having this conversation, they would have, do they use VCAT? Do they use something similar? So there's going to be a...
One more thing to talk about.
A merger discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've started.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it is.
And so the kids that go from the yellow two to the red one, they're really in trouble then. Is that what this is?
Yeah, what I mean. Yeah, that you'd really want to jump in there a little bit.
Now, do you...
Like, because we have more work to do.
More work to do. That sounds great.
Do you, the DRA, the goals for the DRA change from the two assessments? So, or is...
Yeah, they have different target levels.
So, so not only, so even if they stay one, they still might be improving, but just not enough to get to the next target level?
And if they, and if they actually went down as well, if they went from a two to a one, it could just mean that they haven't made any gains, so they're at the same level.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
I'm up.
You're up.
Do you need any introduction?
I, I think he needs, Peter needs no introduction. Thanks, Eric.
Always, everybody. Thank you all.
I'm the Pharaoh. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my comments relatively brief. It's nothing you haven't heard from me before. I want to leave time for the teachers, who I think are going to give you the, the real meat of the story. I know Melanie's going to get into this further, but I also want to say that the growth that you're going to see in the next few slides is the result of an incredible set of systems that we have put together district-wide that serve as safety nets and ladders to help move kids, to catch them when they're struggling, and then to provide them the adequate support to help them move along. And it's all made possible by some phenomenal staff members. Incredible teaching staff at EES, the district. Our interventionists are pulling a ton of weight. Our special educators are pitching in, not only with children on IEPs, but also kids who are, who need sort of a more intensive tier-two level of instruction. And because of special ed law, we're able to use some of their time to work with children who are not on IEPs. So it's really, and as Melanie's going to get into it much deeper, it's really a huge team approach. So this is the data wall from November of 2015. Now, I'll give you a very quick review of how it works. This is the result, we have our needs assessment meetings, where myself, special educator, interventionist, sometimes guidance, we meet with every single teacher in the, in the school and go over the results of the, each of the assessment windows. This, so this is the second grade on the top here, and it is, you'll see this, the green line divides the classes, the yellow line divides the subjects within the grade levels, and the red lines divide the proficiencies. Remember also that with our math screeners, we do not have a proficiency of four. We only have proficiency of three. So what you'll see here is, this is proficiency one, language arts in second grade, proficiency two, language arts, three and four, as a result of our November, of our fall assessment window. Again, we, a few years back, sat down with the teachers and sort of came up with a definition about what, how are we going to, how are we going to measure proficiency? And we use the DRA as sort of the stake in the ground. So if, if a child scores proficiency three on the DRA, they automatically start here. Now, the teacher could say, well, you know what, they had a really great day, but I'm really, I'm worried about their comprehension, I'm worried about their, their pace. So a teacher can choose to put a child back a level before, you know, what the DRA says, but they cannot choose to go forward. They can't say, oh, they had a bad day, but they're really, you know, on a really good day, they'd be up here. So the DRA is sort of the stake in the ground, and so is the, the math screeners. So this is, this is from the fall. I want you to take a look at this group here. This is first grade language arts who scored a proficiency three.
Two.
Uh, two, sorry. A proficiency two. This, I'm going to show you this next, this is that same group in the winter, after the winter assessment. What is significant about that is that this traditionally has been the place, up until a couple of years ago, this was the, this right here was the time when we went, oh my, because this number increased tremendously. And what we've done is through the systems that we've put in place, through the interventions we've put in place, through the, the use of the special educators to help kids, and through also looking at our target scores and upping our target scores in kindergarten so that there wasn't such a large leap. We've actually made a huge dent here, and this is what three looks like now, and this is what four looks like. So we've really seen tremendous growth, and we've seen it across, across all of the grade levels. You'll notice that the, the ones in kindergarten are relative, there are really very few of them, they're really just sort of figuring out how to be here. We're figuring out how to help them be here. And so we're not really, you know, they're having a lot of formative assessments in class, but we, you know, the, it's, it's really more about, you know, welcome. And when I did an analysis earlier of these children here, most of these children are on IEPs, so they are getting rather intensive intervention. And these children here are all receiving some sort of intervention, whether it's a team strategy plan, where the, the entire team has sort of rallied around, helped children figure out, or whether they've been through the educational support team process and are now working with a Title I teacher or a special educator. There are, there are a handful of children in these areas, and I mean a very small handful, who are not working under some sort of a plan to help them move forward. And if there, if there are children in this, in this group who are not on a plan, it's because the teacher has expressed real strong confidence that they can, they can manage to figure it out. So, I can go to some raw numbers here. So reading in the fall, proficiency four, which remember is based on the text levels, proficiency three, two and one. The red is second grade. So in the fall, we had fifty children reading proficiency four, in the winter it was fifty-eight. Blue is first grade. We do not assess, we do not give the DRA in kindergarten in the fall, so those, the green that you can't read says NA. So this, this is the growth that, that we have seen from fall to winter. You'll notice that we gained eight here, we gained twelve here, and I believe that says sixty-nine percent, sixty-nine kids in kindergarten were reading a proficiency four. Stayed even here. This is, this again, this is that group that, this is that first grade, winter, we gained, we gained eleven children there. And this is what, this is the part that I find, and I'm just so really heartened by, is that in the fall, fifty-five children were reading a proficiency two in the first grade, and that number has now dropped to fourteen. Now, what we do see is that proficiency one increased to twenty, from zero to twenty. So that's, twenty of those kids went down, but that means that, let's do the math really quickly. That explains why these numbers have gone up, because kids also went up. And remember that the, the targets change from fall to winter. And then this is the, in math, you can see the same, some, this here, we, we're having some conversations about what's going on there. The asterisks are, in the fall, we used the, so for the second grade, we used the end of first grade screeners. We didn't give the second grade screener in the fall. We used the end of first grades to sit with teachers and sort of discuss where their children were at. And so that's, that's the story of the data walls. Any questions?
I was trying to visually get the twenty, the zero to twenty. Is, is that, that, it is that wall?
It is. It's.
I, I, okay.
It's this group here.
And was there a, a sense of what happened with that? I mean, you said there's some conversations?
It's, it, well, yeah, there's, there's plenty of conversation, but it is the, the target in the fall, the DRA target in the fall is a level six, and in the winter it's a level twelve. It's a, it's a huge jump.
Okay.
So we're having, the discussions are, they're happening at, within the grade level about, you know, what, what can we do to help those children? And then it's also at a district level of what do we, what do we do about those targets? And then, and the timing of the assessments. I can tell you, one of the things that we're doing for the spring assessment is, we've, I've talked with teachers about splitting, sort of splitting their group into two. So if you have children who you're very confident about what their, how their scores are going to come out, those children are assessed earlier, and the kids who really need the extra couple of weeks will be assessed later in the window. So we're just approaching it from a variety of different ways.
I guess you also, just as Eric said, they may have gone from a six to a ten, which meant they went from whatever, down.
Yeah.
In the, so that, that helps.
I would, I would, I mean, I'm almost, I'm, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent certain that none of these children went down in their reading level.
Right.
In terms of the level of what they were reading. Their proficiency went down because the target scores went down.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions? I'll pass it on to Joe.
I know Joellen needs no introduction, but.
Sure, um, yeah.
He loves you, that's why.
My name is Joellen Rowley, I'm a kindergarten teacher. It's my third year in Essex, but I taught for five years in Massachusetts and Arlington before, and I've been an early childhood for quite some time. I didn't really put much on slides, I was going to actually have you look at student work. So I'll just pass out, I only did ten, but. So this is just one student. So I thought that in kindergarten, it's really important, in my opinion, to assess the social emotional growth of a child, and that kind of tops my priority list. And so this student that I pulled had a really hard time coming in to kindergarten. There was a lot of unsafe behavior at the beginning of the year, we had a lot of behavior reports, there was some physical aggression. So we were really, we did a lot of things, but talked to the parents, we made a strategy with my team, with the principal. So what I'm really excited about and I wanted to show is, since this point of the year, we're setting our own learning goals, or the kids are. And so he, kind of, these are sort of things that he struggles with, but he chose in March to say that his goal for the week was to use a quiet voice, second goal was to don't interrupt the group, and this third goal was, don't use the break, meaning the break spot. Because at the beginning of the year, he had actually, we had set up a break spot, so this, so several students, but, so it was versus me saying, please go take a break. It was, I need a break, I am unsafe. So it was a voluntary thing, and he was using it quite a bit, I would say like ten times a day. And now he rarely uses it, so it was kind of exciting. And he said he wanted to stop using it, so that was kind of exciting. So that was just, that's just one snapshot. Obviously, there's a variety of different students in my class, but I thought that that was a really nice example of a student that was sort of growing in self-regulation and just being a part of our community. If you flip the next page, it's, I did it front to back, but it's just kind of showing an example of writing growth. This is, you see the date is in October, and the student is kind of just stringing letters together. His pictures are sort of a little bit unclear. And then, I didn't do like a middle, a middle sheet, but the next one is a booklet all about basketball. So there's several pages of it, but you can see he has a page about the uniform. In order to play basketball, you need to, you need a uni, the uniform, each shirt has a different number, and you can see, obviously, it's much different.
What date is that, chilling?
Uh, that was just this March.
March.
And the front page had the date, but it's like, we did it right before vacation, so maybe last week of March.
I like to slam dunk on the next.
Yeah, so the next page is all about slam dunks. One way to score is to slam dunk, and you can see his pictures are much more clear. And he kind of, one of the reasons he was taking a break at the beginning of the year was because he didn't like writing, and he didn't want to participate, he felt unsuccessful. And he hasn't done that in ages, so, and he's really excited about it now. His next one was about shooting in basketball, you need to shoot. And you can see, like, he has the balls going through his face. His next one was about passing. In order to play basketball, you need to pass, you need to know how to pass. And I like this little illustration of his basketballs, right, over the person's head. So it's just, yeah, exactly. And, yeah, so he, it was, it was kind of exciting, because like I said, he, that was a time where he chose to take a break, he didn't want to participate, he felt unsuccessful. And now he's kind of quite the opposite. So the same student, this is, the next part is just his, like, we do the words their way as a spelling inventory, and so this next one was just a, in September, you can see if they had any letter sound correspondence for spelling words. So he got initial sounds, and you can even just see the fine motor change, it's much more wobbly. If you look at the next one, it's January, and he's got all of them spelled correctly. And you can see the lowercase letters, he's been working on them, you know, there's some uppercase mixed in. And then, again, in April, he was, same student, so you can see he's got most of his blends, a few vowels, he's missing, but, yeah, and I didn't, I don't bring the reading data, but he went from, he was just at the benchmark in the winter, and now he's, we didn't do the fall, the spring one yet, but the one I did just informally before conferences, he was already at the end of the year benchmark. So that was exciting. And then I just had one example of his math growth. In kindergarten, we've been really working on showing through visuals, and, you know, through numbers, words, pictures, to solve a word problem. And so this one was Sam and Tim are planting seeds. Sam plants ten seeds, Tim plants four seeds. How many seeds did Sam and Tim plant? And at first, if you just look at it, it's kind of unclear what his illustration is, but he actually has lines for each of the four seeds the one student has. And he's got ten lines, even though it's a little bit unclear to count them all, but he does have ten there. He wrote the word seeds, and then he has his number sentence. And his, his strength is definitely math, so this is, you know, he kind of came in with, as a strong math student, but, so, I just learned to.
Game a little ways.
Yeah. So it's kind of exciting.
And Tim's got a rockin' haircut there.
Yeah. Exactly.
That's, that's good.
Thank you.
We know that you're one of those educators with young children at home, so please, you know.
As riveting as art.
So that actually, what Joellen was just talking about feeds really nicely into this, which is our ePass data, which is, we've, we've been looking at ways to sort of, how can we, how can we take sort of a rough measure of children's habits of mind? And so there was a group of us that worked district-wide to come up with the ePass, which was, we're looking at children through a variety of strength-based, a strength-based approach. So we're looking at their communication skills, their empathy skills, self-control, there's a range that we look at. And what you'll see here is, these are the school-wide graphs from the fall and the winter. The red are the children who are really struggling, whether it be with self, in a number of, of those areas. So they might be lacking self-control, they might be struggling with communication skills, they might be struggling with empathy, any, you know, the whole range. The yellow are the kids who are sort of scoring ahead of them. The green is sort of where we want, we're hoping, most everyone would be. And then the purple are the children who are just really sort of rocking it, they're, they're, they're the leaders. And what I, what I want to point out is the, the red here, the, I, I'm pretty well familiar with the child that Joellen was describing. And he is certainly one of the reasons that this red has gone to a much thinner line here. He and several other children, as well as this yellow that is smaller here than here. What I, what I, what I think Joellen did not tell you about was the phenomenal one, phenomenal amount of work that she did with that one child and the other sixteen or seventeen children in her room. I, I thought he and I were going to be best buddies for three years. And, and we actually are. I mean, he, he seeks me out in the hallway to say hi, and, and the, the change is, when I talked earlier about, we, we're just trying to help them figure out how to be in school, that's what Joellen has done with this guy. That he is, he has figured out what his place is in his community, and he's reveling in it. So, so when I talked about the, the work that everybody does to help these kids, I think Joellen picked a perfect example. And it's not just about his academic achievement. The, the academic achievement may be there, it may not be there, but until they really know how to function within the community that is being set up, they're, they're going to struggle. So, so I'm, I'm very pleased to see how this is going, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it looks in, in the spring.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, Joellen.
Thank you.
Wendy. To remind our presenters, we're going to end it at eight, so just to.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat, a lot, a lot of what Peter said, I would say as well, in terms of systems and processes. of systems and processes, so I'm gonna, where is it? Right. There we go. Okay.
People do this when they.
Okay, so.
Lightsaber mandible.
So this is our November data wall, again, you'll see on the left, I'm gonna use my little pointer thingy, so this is our math screeners in the, in the, in November, so again, like Peter was saying, our third grade kiddos do not take a screener in the fall, we use the end of second grade screener to gauge where, where we are, so this is fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, fifth, fourth, third, this is fourth here in the middle, third, so, pretty self-explanatory, we can get into the numbers a little bit in a sec. Sorry, the little clarity here isn't great, so this is literacy, our literacy wall in November, again, all kids are screened using the gates, as we were talking about earlier, several of those kids, and I'll break it down for you, third grade, ninety-six of our kids were assessed in the fall, excuse me, ninety-six of our kids met or exceeded, so they did not have to be assessed on the DRA. So you'll see, these are our fifth graders, sec, sorry, fifth graders, fourth graders, third graders, again, fifth, fourth, third, these are our fours, which is really encouraging, looking at the number of fours, kiddos scoring at a four in the fall is really telling, look at all those third graders, ye go EES. So these are our incoming third graders this year, so really, really exciting, and you'll see, let me move to the next screen, so this is our winter data, fifth, this is math, fifth, fourth, third, all of these kiddos are on some sort of a plan, whether it be an EST plan, an IEP plan, or a 504 plan. You do see some big numbers here, and fifth grade in particular, this was our winter screener, and sort of freaked me out when I first started looking at that data in January, we did a lot of work with this data, with the fifth grade team, we did determine that there was a large portion of the assessment that kids had not received instruction in, we spent a great deal of time in, oh, I can't remember which, in-service day, we worked on this data with Betsy Allen, our math coach, really digging into this data and finding out what was really going on. Our fifth grade team, their primary focus this year, all year, in their success block and in their PLC work, has been around math computation. They've done an amazing job using formative assessment every week and a half to two weeks as a grade level, kids are moving in and out of strategy groups and, and really banging out these strategies and doing some really, really great work, so the data, I'm positive at the end of the year is gonna look much, much better. As well as, I have a couple of things to think about, so in third grade, twenty-four out of the thirty-seven kiddos that scored a two here, scored very close to the benchmark. So there are tar, there's a target range, what was the target range, twenty to twenty-five, and twenty-four out of those thirty-seven kiddos were within four or five of the target, so those are all kiddos that, whose needs can be met in the classroom by the classroom teacher pretty readily. Those other kiddos, chances are they're on some sort of a plan, they're working with Tammy Hugulett, our math interventionist, or in the case of reading with Karen Cole, our reading interventionist. So for fourth grade, we had, let's see, twenty-six out of the fifty-three kids, I think there were fifty-three kids that scored a two, twenty-six of those kids were really close to the benchmark. This group, this fifth grade group, even though it looks pretty scary looking at those numbers, hang on a second, so, we had eighty-two students that scored a two on the winter screener. Thirty-nine of those kiddos were really, really close to benchmark. The work that I've seen fifth grade teachers do in success block special educators, fifth grade teachers, Tammy Hugulett, our instructional assistants, all engaged in that success block process, it's really, I'm sure made a huge difference there.
Wendy, the, the students, you, we have two, three columns, we don't have enough space.
Right, these are threes.
But the threes, because we only go up to three, includes kids at and above the standard.
This is fourth grade. This is, sorry?
Kids in three are at or above.
At or above, yes. So these are our third graders up here, looking really great, you know, and again, the work is success block work, our interventionist, our PLC work, with a real focus, a connection to the teacher growth model, teachers setting goals that are directly connected to student learning. Our needs assessments look a little different than Peter's, we just started doing them this year, and we've connected those needs assessments in January, the first time we've done them since I've been here, to our teacher growth model. So when we've sat down with, when I've sat down with classroom teachers in January to go over their formative goals, goals for the year, we've had this data out talking about it, and there have been, you know, some conversations where that, that kid you were talking about earlier, where, you know, I've had that conversation with the classroom teacher saying, okay, let's talk about this kiddo, why are, you know, what can we do to make, to make sure that this kid is showing some progress? This is a kiddo that wasn't on a plan, that was showing no growth, and those, those tough conversations have, have had to occur, it's like, why, where are we going with this kiddo? That student, I know that student is, is now on a plan and receiving supports, so that's where we are with the data wall. This data, again, a reminder, this data reflects the number of kids that were assessed using the DRA in the fall and in the winter, so not all kids are assessed, I sort of wish that we would head in that direction, so I could get a really clear picture of every kid and where they're performing. We gotta use a different color next time.
Put on the computer screen.
I think some of the things, just to point out, so in third grade, we had, our ones went down, our twos went up, our threes went up, twenty-seven of our third grade students improved by a proficiency level, in one case, two proficiency levels, so that was really, really encouraging to see that, that kind of growth. Fourth, let's see, so this is third, I'm gonna look at the numbers, can you see them, Mark? What's that number right there?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Seven.
We're a lot closer to the screen.
Yeah, the printer, that's good.
Um, there we go, all right. So again, these are the numbers for our math fall screener, and our math winter screener, you'll see, our number of twos in fifth grade went up tremendously. I was concerned when I initially looked at that data, but I, I haven't been concerned for a while, seeing the work that's happening, and when we dug into that data, teachers really teased out what the focus areas needed to be that brought kids down to a two. Tammy Hugulett and Karen Cole, our addition math interventionists and reading interventionists that have been in addition to our staff this year, have been phenomenal, they did take part in success block early on, I would say the first trimester, the first three months of school, but we realized pretty quickly that we really needed them focusing more on tier-two instruction, and pulled them from supporting the success block, except for fifth grade. We kept Tammy Hugulett, the math interventionist, supporting the fifth grade team during their success block time because of the screening data that we were seeing, we were concerned about that data. My hunch is that with all of the work that we were doing at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level, as well as at EES, we're gonna see some of these, we're gonna see the screening data improve tremendously, because we're really, really digging into it. What else? Can I just piggyback on that? Yeah, sure. I was gonna say, one of the things you need to remember is that we are in a new world of new standards, so the kids who are coming up are now having more of the composite parts that they need to have, whereas when we just started, like Melanie started in third grade, but her kids hadn't had K-12 at that particular time, so there's gaps that are happening that are starting to equal out, so the screeners we're using are very much aligned to the common core, and so we have to get ourselves aligned to the sta, to the standards, and so I think it's a work. And pacing too, you know, just thinking of, you know, are we all on, on the right page, I think, and sometimes we need to look at the screeners. Yeah. And the assessments, and what, what are we asking kids to do, and, you know, is, it's not just about those numbers, you know, when I looked at that, you know, I saw seventy percent of our kids in fifth grade were, were receiving a one or a two, and my initial thinking was, oh my goodness, you know, but I, upon further digging and meeting with teams and really getting into the data, I was way less concerned. So, some really good stuff happening, the PLC work, am I missing, our work with our coaches, just really doing a lot more work with our coaches this year, the early literacy camp, that's sponsored by the Y, that's grant-funded through the Y, we have another year of that in third grade, that has been extremely beneficial for mostly third graders, but some fourth and fifth graders this year as well, so that's been great. So Melanie, you're on.
Right. So I'm Melanie Savio, I teach third grade, I want to thank Wendy for inviting me, and the board for listening, there's, this to me is, this is such exciting news to share, this is why I teach, because when a kid like Orin comes to me totally disengaged, feeling like he is never going to be able to read, that's what gets me going, it's like, I am your teacher.
Get your tissue, so.
So, so, when I first met him, actually, he came to school before school began because mom was concerned about his attitude about school, and she, he was being taken from a friend, he wasn't placed in a classroom with his best friend, and she was concerned about that, so, right off the bat, when I met him, I knew that we had some work to do, because he, he just presented as a kid who didn't enjoy school, and I made some promises to him, I told him that he was going to learn how to read, and he was going to love it, and, so, yeah, thanks. And this is before break, I don't usually wear tie dye, but it's our team shirt, and I look really tired.
Little schoolboy first.
That's showing you up, isn't it?
He's so cute.
I first met Orin, he reported that he needed reading, and was a very reluctant reader, would work hard at not reading, he was reading at a level sixteen, which is first grade level, at the beginning of the year, it became clear that we needed to approach Orin's reading with a team that could help support his growth. I honestly believe this is a huge success story for Orin, and it is clear what happens when a team wraps themselves around a student to help propel them forward. I could not have done this without my team, the team approach really works.
I met Orin the first day of school in his third grade class, and I remember him very clearly, because when I asked him what he liked about school, he was very quick to tell me that he hated reading, and that he couldn't read, and I said, so what's your goal this year? And he said, I want to learn how to read, and I assured him that we would teach him. And then throughout the year, I've worked with, Orin was reading at the middle of the first grade level at that time, he, I read with him in a success block and worked with him, and I've worked with him some in the early morning lit camp, and he has become a reader, he loves to read, he is engaged in the book, his level and his competency has just increased tenfold, and he's just delightful, now you can have a discussion about different books, but he enjoys reading, and he enjoys reading all books, so he's just become quite a good reader this year.
At the beginning of the year, Orin was reading at about a end of first grade, beginning of second grade reading level, his confidence in his reading was pretty poor, and I had heard that from Mrs. Savio at the beginning of the year, that he pretty much saw himself as a non-reader. I saw him four days a week for thirty minutes in a small group, but once down in my space, you know, I might give him a passage to look at independently, and then rotate around and listen to kids read, and he would automatically give up on himself, saying he couldn't do it, and he couldn't read, and then I would just remind him of what Mrs. Savio had shared with me, is that, you know, maybe you can't read that yet, we're not, we're not saying that about ourselves, we're gonna look at what we can do. We started with small successes, we would master sight words, and we'd become a big deal. As time progressed, he became more confident in his reading, which was really a big stepping point for him, was being able to even think I can do it, and then start working on it, and then he, really the patterns in reading really started to click for him, and he started to become more invested in his reading, because he was, he wanted to be in the classroom, he felt like he was part of the community, and he felt like he could, he was a reader, he saw himself as a reader. I would go up in the classroom and I would see him reading to other students, before we really made some big changes to his IEP, he would come down with another student, and I would have them do fluency passages to see if they could beat their time, and the other student would wanna see who was the winner per se, you know, he grew at recognizing his abilities, and then seeing what struggles he went through, recognizing it, his friends, and really helping them grow themselves. One of the first things that Orin said to me when I met him this year as a new third grader, was that he did not like reading, he did not like books, and there probably wasn't a book in this library that he wanted to or could read, and I can say, within a few weeks of the school year starting, that had started to change. Melanie had made a suggestion to him about the Fly Guy book series, and he really latched onto that, soon he was coming in every few days to pick a new book, and then he was done with that, so we needed to find him a new series, and then another new series, and then another new series, so the progress that I've seen in him this year is incredible, and his whole demeanor has changed in the library, he has more confidence, he's happy and excited about the books that he's borrowing.
He's just progressed so much, and it's so, it makes me and his dad so happy to see that, he likes to read now, and enjoys it, and. I'm really happy that the teachers that have helped me this year, and that I've cared enough to stick with them, and super proud.
Well, before I saw him this year, it was difficult, and now I think it's pretty easy. And I learned a lot of skills to read with and to understand what else.
And so now, do you think, do you enjoy reading?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Wow.
Today Orin is reading, you know, just about on grade level, or on grade level, he sees himself as a reader, he sees himself as a leader too within the classroom, and this is a huge success, you know, going from the end of first grade all the way up to a third grade level, you don't, you don't see that every day, it was truly a group effort from the classroom teacher to home, to Orin himself, growing as an individual.
an individual.
Thanks to Anne Pius too for putting.
I just wanna make a couple points that, again, this is happening, this is happening all over Essex Town School District. This is just one example of the really great work that we're doing here, you know, without the help of the coaches and the support of the administration. And even, I have to tell you, today, this happened after PE. Orin asked me if he could go to the library. And I said, sure, 'cause I love it when he wants to go to the library. And he came back upstairs with a book, No Summit Out of Sight. And he showed it to me and said, Mr. Baucher, our PE teacher, told me about this book. He had, Mr. Baucher has a personal connection to the book. And I was just so thrilled that, I mean, we're a literate community and our kids are getting it from the PE teacher, from the librarian. I mean, it's just, so, it's so, so exciting to be able to share that and, you know, to be so proud of the town that we work and live in.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't wanna shortchange you and John, so take your time.
Oh, no, that's fine. We'll certainly be done in time.
Oh, the habits of mind, ePass. All right, showing great improvements as well. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but a lot of proactive work going on using the ePass data from the fall. Saw some significant changes from fall to winter. This is whole school, but you can see changes within each grade level as well. And a big focus on third grade this year. We saw some great improvements.
You'll see this again in the fall. We'll bring it back in the annual report.
Yeah, good stuff.
Kevin, you need an introduction?
No.
We're just getting them ready for you.
This is our data wall. This is November. This is April. It looks just like everybody else's and that we've had some great growth. ELAs on the top, math is on the bottom, and it goes six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight. It runs across. You should notice that there's a great deal of ones in our math in the fall time in the screener. And in the winter screener, you can see there's many that have moved or to the twos and actually twos in threes. Again, it's the great work from our teachers. It's phenomenal work of the coaches and the interventionists. Next year, we're looking at increasing of the interventionists in our, for mathematics. I'm looking forward to see what that will do. But it will certainly support all these kids. Lori LaPlante is our interventionist in sixth grade and in a little bit of seventh. So, she's, some of these kids here, she sees.
Did that increase or did you just spread your?
I just spread them out.
Take a step more?
Yeah, you know, I, it's not much different, but it's definitely different.
Okay, I just, thank you.
Yep, so, those are our numbers. I apologize in the greens. I'll change that for next time. But again, I mean, I can look at them all, but the math in particular, we just looked at earlier, you know, you have your, it's just a significant difference. And I can't add them up quickly, dance more of a. Quick math there and the quick math there, but it's a significant difference.
We'll just say smaller. Good job. And top numbers are bigger.
That's right. And as we go through, it's always nice to see as we go through the growth that ETSD or our students through the work of the ETSD. And how, when you see it come all the way through, it's just phenomenal. It really is. It's the same as everybody else's data wall, just different numbers and.
Any surprises up there, Kevin, or from all the?
Not really surprises. It's, it looks almost the same every year. So, I guess that's a surprise. Is that, how can we attack those kids a little bit earlier? You know, so, but it really, we see every year, this growth of our children. What can we do to catch them a little bit earlier? Surprise for me, I guess, would always be, I'm curious, this is only our second year doing the math. And last year was the same with our sixth grade fall one was just tough. What was really, actually really great about this year was there were already conversations that were happening between the fifth and the sixth grade teachers. And that hadn't happened in the past. So, and it wasn't a blame. It was, what can we do to support so that we can be, our kids can be more prepared for the future? Let's say come in the middle.
Can I duck toe on that? Actually, so, yeah, fifth and sixth grade teachers were talking right back in October, I think September even, and want, asking sixth grade teachers, what is it kids are struggling with? What are you noticing? And so, right from the beginning, that fifth grade team had a focus on math with specifics around what were the areas of need, right from the beginning, even before we got into the success block work. Their PLC work was about that. So, yeah, it was great.
Dylan, while I'm on a roll of putting people on the spot, can I put you on the spot? So, one of the things that we've talked about a little bit is that these kids who are on plans, kids who are receiving, in addition to good first instruction, other services through Title I, through the multi-tier system of support. And one of the things that we talked about is not, the strategies might look different depending on the building that the kid is in and whether or not the strat, you know, how do we, or is there a standard, is there, are the practices that would, that if they're working in fifth grade, should they be working in sixth grade as well? And how do we approach that? Not standardizing, but how do we make sure the strategies that we saw great success here are moving to the next, the next schoolhouse? Some thoughts about that?
I think that's important, sort of that vertical alignment in terms of the intervention work we're doing. And it starts with collaboration first, getting a good sense of what we're doing at the elementary school. How does that, how does that connect to Founders Day and the middle school? So, I can't say with certainty exactly where we are with that alignment yet, but I think that, you know, the conversations need to happen for your cost of buildings to get there.
Think of the introduction of the math interventionist at Founders, which we supported in last year's budget. And I'm sure that the interventionist is finding ways to affect learning for that, that group of kid or the tangled up in math and making sure that whatever worked in fifth grade is following to the sixth grade intervention at EMS. And I would agree that I don't think that that's as tight as maybe it can be in the future.
Mark, could you comment on that? At our last, at our last half day in service, we spent, well, day in service, we spent a good chunk of time working as vertical teams at EES. So, we had a, one team made up of some second grade teachers, first grade teachers, kindergarten teachers, as well as special educators, mixed in. So, we had, I think, three, four different groups of those vertical teams looking at math fluency. And kindergarten starting out saying, this is what, here are our targets. Here's what we're trying to achieve with math fluency with kids. And it was within ten. And then first grade built onto that this is what we're doing. And then second grade did the same thing so that they were getting, they were getting that whole vertical picture. And then I'm working with the PLC teacher leaders to take all of that information and put it together into a card, sort of the teachers can use so that if they find a child, if they have a child in the second grade who's struggling in a particular area, they can sort of track it back to, okay, so what were they doing in first grade? What are some of the activities? What are some of the lessons that they do in first grade that I can now do here in order to help that child solidify that understanding? And we, we, we really just, it was, it was exciting work. And we, the whole time, we're kinda going, okay, now how do we grow this? How do we, how do we create this same link between those groups?
Sorry, Kevin, didn't mean to knock you off the track there.
I think another reason why the, it shifts such dramatically, it really does, is drastically is that, and Ellen touched upon it earlier with your, with your language lesson in the beginning around formative assessments. And I think Wendy talked about it with her success block. It's the work that the teachers do with the formative assessments daily that they then lead to the intervention block that they're able to work with these kids and try to catch them quickly and not let it just linger. So, my last piece here is to talk a little bit about the investment of school-wide habits of mind. And although, again, it looks really great, bulky and stuff, one of the reasons why the numbers look so different is because some of the teams just used the number three and they were actually going to use number four. So, that increased those numbers the second time through. So, that's what it looks like. But the most important thing is this stuff here, which is, those are the number of groups that came out of the ePass data. These are the number of kids that are involved in those. So, when this came through, we looked at the thirteen percent, if you would, and there are some green ones in here too, that needed some executive functioning skills.
You wanna define what that means?
Organization, time management, how to be a student would be within that. So, we noticed that there were seventeen kids that needed that. So, we threw together an executive functioning group for those kids to make sure they meet those needs. Same thing down through, so, ophelia, velocity, with these, all three of those groups have, they do activities outside of school or in school. So, the ophelia and velocity, obviously girls, those are both girls only. And it's around being a middle school girl. I'll say it that way. And the challenges that come along with that and how to engage with each other and what's, and they are put into situations that might lead to some sort of angst and then coached through that. Same thing down through, so, emotional regulation, relational aggression, that's what we call it, would be the friendship piece. Chill is the, is the snowboarding program through Burton. We started up an internal mentoring program where our teachers are attached on to students and they check in with them. That's what that is. And then there's the check-in, check-out, which is at the end, beginning of the day, end of the day. They have somebody that checks in with them, checks out, make sure they have all their homework, make sure they have their planner sign, make sure they dig it all their stuff into the locker, that all that, just kind of getting them ready. The last one is those friendship groups, the typical lunch group time that you might have with the guidance counselor. That's what that is. Yeah, so again, I think more importantly than the graphs are really what's happening within. And so, that's what that is. Any questions on e?
I like the way you did that.
I will say that I would like to take all the credit, but I'm actually going to point to this gentleman over here who gave us about two and said, I'm gonna make your graphs better than everybody else's. So, there they are.
But I wanna make sure the Burton, we've been talking about this presentation for a month, but then we had vacation, so that's the two o'clock.
I had graphs in there, they just weren't as pretty as this one or Jack. I went over and I was like, Kevin, we gotta fix this.
Melanie, you really need to get off this.
Well, I had them.
It was usually my Ellen time that began today. And when Eric came over, I said, okay. So, I knew what it was. Anyway.
Well, I wanna just point out and to both, to Jo Ellen and John and Melanie, once again, I think what we all heard is the three corollary principles, which is kids here and every day, that this work is really important, that we know you can meet the standard and we're never gonna give up on you. And I think you profiled very well the accomplishments of all three of the kids in your classrooms. And they're just, just a small example of, I think, what we, we see on a regular basis. What we're committed to, you know, we tend to talk a lot about closing the gap between the kids who are here and the kids that are here. And how do we, and I think that we are affecting that, that trend. But there's also a group of kids that are, that come in highly capable already. And we wanna tailor, I'd like to tailor the next report to be able to showcase or profile those students that we're extending learning opportunities for, enriching learning opportunities. And not to get them to a four, but to show that because of their unique learning gifts, what can we do to meet their needs? We tend to talk a lot about those kids who can't because we believe once we get them, they can, they are gonna be successful when they go to ninth, have a ninth grade experience. And that's where a lot of our investment goes because we believe it makes our community a more whole community and a better place to live and learn. So, but I wanna thank teachers and especially principals for your educational leadership, your smarts about what needs to happen in your schoolhouse. And of course, to Dylan and Ellen for their support in your work. So, unless there are any questions, that concludes.
I wanted to, I actually wanted to touch on something you talked, we were talking about some vertical, I'm curious with the, with the Common Core coming in, has that made this easier, harder? Does that make vertical integration work better, work more? I mean, just how does that play in or does it just totally not matter and you guys will be doing this regardless of what that, what that Common Core thing says? I mean, obviously it changes your curriculum.
It's a great question, but I also think we've been doing it for a while here, well before the Common Core. I think Ellen with her leadership over the last handful of years, ten years, really been looking at the curriculum design, really getting us to sit down together and have those conversations, honest conversations. Because one of the things, some of you were here, some of you weren't here, but we met some ninth grade students maybe six or seven years ago. And one of the things that they said was, yeah, well, if I'm in this classroom, they got this. It was some girl from Milton, I think she showed up. But the ones that were actually our students.
That was kind of an odd experience.
They mentioned that we, if we were on this team, we seem to have gotten this education. If we were on this team, we got this education. And with the work that Ellen and all the teachers, but Ellen's leadership on that has now made us, and the conversations we're having with our PLCs are now, I can honestly say that the students that are the Galaxy team are receiving the same, the same curriculum and the same education that the students on the Cascade team has the same as the Edge. So, there's this continuity that's there. I think we were, we were really extending our learning anyways throughout, but I think this has got us more in line.
I think in a way, we were very fortunate that right as Common Core was sort of ramping up, we were really getting heavily invested in PLCs. And so, there was, through the PLCs, we had, there was sort of the environment in which those conversations could happen, starting, starting with the district curriculum committees. But then they had a place to go to as opposed to sort of needing to pull all of the kindergarten teachers together to say, okay, now let's talk about this new curriculum that we need to put together. That vehicle was already in place. And so, I think it, the work was by no means simple, but that made it simpler.
I do think, Peter, we've been here together longer, I guess, is that at one point, we were in three different buildings. And three, it felt very isolated and very much, it was the middle school and we did what we did. It was Founders, they do what they do. And looking at today and through the work of the PLCs and Mark bringing it all together over the last handful of years, it's really, it feels much more ETSD than it's ever felt.
I was just gonna say, as a board member who was here, then left, then came back, it's, this team that you have now is awesome because you're right. When it was separate buildings, it was like, it was awful, so. Done very well.
So, thank you, everybody. Well, job, well done.
Thank you all so much. We are always so moved by your commitment and it is unbelievable. Thank you for sharing.
All right.
That was too much civic.
I thought it was a janitor working.
I wish that check-in, check-out, man, with my time, I'm in the middle of school.
Chris, where's your homework? I don't know. Chris, do you have your time? I don't know.
I took the next course for Ellen.
She makes it to the pass for the night.
I have one.
Maybe you need me to write it for now. No, I need advance notice next time.
Thank you all so much.
There's no place to hide because it is, it's now a pre-K-8 curriculum and PLCs are so robust and we have these great data. There's no place, you can't, even if you're, if you're underperforming, we're gonna, we're gonna catch you. You know, we're gonna, we're not gonna ignore you. It was easy years ago, my generation just to ignore the kids who were not, were wallflowers. You just ignored them, but you can't get away from them.
I still use Gates McGinty either. Those are the first tests I learned how to administer.
I'm hoping, and I appreciate that student's parent was willing to let us share the story. So, I was really moved and I'm hoping maybe we can have that, if the parent is comfortable with it, as something we can link.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too.
To the notes we might put up at the Facebook page, but along with minutes from the meeting. It is so powerful, the, the story of collaboration among these incredibly gifted educators in all facets. Committed to the journey of these kids. It's so moving and makes us very proud, I think collectively.
That's a really tangible example.
The work that is, you know, why it's so important.
Well, let's, let's get into some two point four. Right. This is what, this is what I'm really here for. I, I was actually, I didn't, I wasn't sure how, what to bring back, I'll be honest. The questions you, you asked were fairly provocative when we met on the twelfth of April. Because we've never experienced as a board in the super, not at least since I've been here. You know, Dan, you just asked a really great question about, you know, what is compliance when you are projecting, you know, a deficit? And again, it was, it's a projection at this point. So I, you know, you'll see what I did, which is not a whole lot, but I did include in green for you on page three. I didn't, I'm gonna call it up, are you guys?
Does it help to call it up, you guys? I've got mine up.
I would share mine, but I don't know if you want to read it on the phone. I was gonna say. I would share mine, but. I know. I will have to probably get my eyes checked soon.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, right there.
So this is the added piece. That I report under this section, subsection six, non-compliance. And I think that that's just to keep it clean. It is a fish or not a fish. And I was sort of struggling with where am I? So I thought, you know, I think overall in the policies, I believe I am compliant, but in this particular section, I, you know, I am not. And we know and you are in support of, I think this, it's hard to, when we run in a lean program, all you need is a few things that you weren't anticipating to, to make it head south. In some ways that has occurred. Don, did you have a?
The last line, it says, balance in August with the final figures, that's what be known in September?
We will be able to provide a tentative fund balance in July of this summer and a largely complete full balance in August, yeah.
With the final figure, but I'm just saying you're.
She typed out.
I'm sorry. See? She has a eagle eye.
Your net recommendation, known probably.
I didn't catch, it's the first time I read it, so that's not good.
We're gonna have more accurate numbers because we're gonna have a different revenue picture. And I felt that I wanted to acknowledge that and I, and I own that, it's my responsibility, although I think we've, what I've noted, the cost-saving measures is basically I've done the best I can to put the brakes on spending. I mentioned on the twelfth of April that both the associations have, I've worked with to try to limit the number of professional development opportunities afforded to them through the contract, recognizing that every professional development opportunity, especially credit-bearing courses, come with a cost. And they've been just very gracious to, to work with me on that. We've deferred some other purchases, purchases to FY seventeen, again, sort of like what's most mission critical. I don't have any other rabbits in my hat to pull out to try to minimize the continued spending that needs to happen because it's only April twenty-fifth. I also wanted to mention for FY seventeen, some things I alluded to on the twelfth. You know, what are we doing at the structural level, systems level, to try to minimize the costs associated with unanticipated special ed services that come up? And these are things that, you know, we've been working with Dylan on pretty closely over the last six, six or seven weeks. One, one that is of greatest interest to me are how decisions are being made at the, at the planning team table. And what, in looking at a sampling of different individual students' programs, it, it, it seems obvious to all of us that, that those questions are not always being asked at every planning team level. Meaning if the child is receiving this little service in this particular grade level, just does it automatically continue into the next grade level? So there's no real procedure in place that's consistently applied around how to fade services based on student performance data. I think you heard Peter refer to systems as having a series of ladders and, and nets. I mean, that's sort of our metaphor. And not that we want to cut the nets by any means, but through good supportive first instruction in the classroom and making sure that teacher is resourced, as you heard John or someone said. The child now would be able to be served primarily in the classroom. We've done that strategically. Without that, you're gonna continue to rely on these extra services. So that's something of pretty big importance in my mind. And as a result, we see an exponential growth and the need to have IAs, instructional assistance. So those are some systems things that I just can't flip the light switch and say, you're, you know, you're now going to be the primary teacher for all these kids because we're just not set up for that. But I do think we can make some inroads into that, those types of changes, albeit slowly, starting next year. So that's what I've added. There's more to it than just special education, that, things that have occurred this year, leave of absences. It's mostly related to personnel that, you know, we left, our director of student support services resigned in, in December and left in January. And there was a, there was costs associated with that, that move. So there are a number of things that personnel-related that created this, this projection of not having enough money.
I think what you've added in is, is very effective. It's, it's not just acknowledging, oops, we've got a potential shortage, you're saying, and here's what we're doing without it. I think that was a very valuable piece. And I'm, I'm curious, you, you, in this circumstance, as you said, it's either a fish or it's not, you, you, you look, you're looking, this is very much a binary. I'm in compliance, I'm not in compliance. Not a, what are all the ones we have on our reports, you know, substantial, partial?
Yeah, yeah.
You're going with a?
Well, I don't have that language in my, that rating system's in my head, but I'm trying to also be consistent with what I've done in the past. Maybe we can explore that idea.
No, because he gave us this information, it's at least partially compliant.
If we were, yeah, as I say, if we, if we wanted to operate in the spectrum, we, you know, we could certainly find someplace. I respect your recognition of making it consistent and say, are we, are we not?
It's, it's one section of an entire report. So ostensibly, ostensibly I am partially in compliance.
Right, exactly.
So yeah, in that category, Mark said he's not in compliance, but then at the end, he indicates that for the, you know, he's in compliance. For the plan. So I think that those can coexist and be honest assessments of the situation.
One of the things I'd like to, when we, when we're merging with Chittin and Central, you know, it's gonna be really interesting to, to talk more deeply about how they, how they, what are their strategies? One of the things that I've, we've done for the last, since I've been here six years is that we, every piece of money that is, we don't spend, we carry, we carry forward. Because we want to, thereby reducing the liability on taxes the following year. But there are other systems that don't do that, that they have carry-forward funds that they maintain. And I, and there's, you know, how do I, because we're always gonna have challenges here. Because we, we, we have a little bit of variance that we, we budget. This is the first time we've been, faced this, but how do you, knowing that there's gonna be those unanticipated costs, how do we have, what's the safety net? What's the strategy to create a safety?
So in essence, a reserve fund, but not a capital reserve fund, a budget variation.
Your emergency fund.
I have a question, Mark, thinking back, and I looked back at the minutes from two years ago's budgeting. We budgeted for eighty thousand dollars to be spent to, in, we spent it in this year as an operating expense that was really a capital improvement. But we were concerned if that article didn't pass, we still had to do, I think it was the fire alarms at Essex Elementary. So my question to you and Roger, not to, it would have no impact on this really, is why wouldn't that be able to be considered a capital improvement? Be booked as such, because despite, we budgeted for it as an operating expense, it is not an operating expense and we knew it when we budgeted for it. But we were concerned if that article didn't pass, we still had to do it and we had no budget for it. So it would not even be stretching the truth to book it as a capital improvement. And adjust our priority list for the coming year of those capital expenses that we have a hundred and twenty-five sitting there, we had a hundred and twenty-five approved. We had a list of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of stuff that we wanted done before the unification. But I don't think anywhere, anywhere near as pressing as the alarm system at the elementary school. And so that list that we prioritized for two hundred and fifty thousand, I feel somewhat uncomfortable with the idea of us passing a deficit and executing on a list when eighty thousand of what we did was actually a capital improvement. So I might ask for you and Roger to sort of consider that piece of information because otherwise we are, you know, passing to a new unified district a deficit while we are at the same time spending a quarter of a million on capital improvements. And we had eighty thousand in capital improvements that we did under the operating budget this year. I think food for thought and maybe follow up if that's something that you and Roger have.
No, you had sent to me, I've checked in with Roger and based on this discussion, and I'll check in tomorrow. We are in the process of assembling bids for, you know, improving the envelope around this building, which is the lion's share of that cost, the window replacement. Neil came in, they're falling out of the cement, you know, that type of thing. So I think re-looking at that list and is there a way to take, you know, I would agree with the.
Or the other things that were maybe were less pressing, like I don't, I don't recall necessarily the specifics, maybe ventilation system and a, I'm not really sure. And I know that Neil and Roger would be able to better, I think, know if there's eighty thousand worth that, you know, isn't critical so that we could properly, frankly, properly book the eighty thousand we spent this year on the fire alarm system at Essex Elementary.
I would agree that would be fall in line with what we would consider capital improvement.
Absolutely. And we really had a thorough conversation on that when we budgeted that year and, you know, knew it was a capital improvement that we needed to put in the operating budget because we needed it to get done.
Yeah, I think that'd be a very fair way.
Yeah, I think that's worth at least considering.
I'll report out to the board next time I see each other.
I don't think it changes anything about this report. I think it's just more information to.
I make the motion, we accept policy two point four.
Any further discussion? You didn't think you could. Any further discussion? Thank you for bringing up that, Mark, and documenting some of the stuff that will help. Help for the future. I appreciate it. All right, all those in favor? Passes five zero. Thank you. All right. I'm down. Sorry, Mark. I've got so many tabs open, I was like, ah, there's my agenda.
He needs that clicker to work this way.
I think the clicker is the bane of everybody's existence, I know. Get terrible angst with that clicker. There we go, got it. So merger update, I feel like it's been a long time since we've met and a long time since I group met, and maybe I'm on vacation mode. We have a meeting coming up tomorrow evening. We have named some task groups, I guess we would call, divvied up some of the upcoming work. There's a superintendent search group, there's a policy group, there's a negotiations council. That's the most official, the others are just sort of task groups. But obviously still important work to try and at least get some headway on some of those categories. But the communication group is up and working and trying to keep information out as we are doing work and keeping people informed. And the negotiations subcommittee will begin its work, coming up with some training. I'm, I sit on that committee with Brendan and Andre Roy from, from Westford. And Liz Subin and Billy Shell are up and running on the communication group. And they've started a blog and they really, I'm so relieved to have them doing that, it's great.
Is that still being housed on the?
No, they set up, we have a new domain or whatever it's called, but the actual, I think, website is sort of empty except for it directs.
To the blog.
To the blog. It's being built.
Dot E W S D dot org will bring you to the blog spot.
Yeah.
Great.
So that's terrific.
Is that now the official name?
E W S D will be the web, the web domain. Right now it's just a blog, but it will be, I hope, the web domain.
Okay. So it'll just be Essex, Westford School District.
Yeah, well, that's, that's gonna be our abbreviation for those things, but I mean, we have, I think we've cut out some of those words in the middle and sort of, you know, for, right now that's our working title. But I wouldn't say we've renamed ourselves in any way, we still have a mouthful. So I'll have more. Still a work in progress. So I'm trying to think, Mark, if there are other things of substance to share at this point. And we have the project manager working with us and he'll actually come to the meeting on Tuesday evening. I, I've met him before and, you know, been on committees with him before, but I know that, I'm sure Mark and Judy are really appreciating his work with them. And I, it'll, I think the whole board will feel good to have some opportunity to meet him and ask some questions.
Would the superintendent, once the superintendent search committee reaches their candidate, does that superintendent then find a new business manager? Are you gonna reach out because Grant's leaving?
They're working on that now.
Yeah, so we're, there's three of us who are part, I think the reporter identified the teams last Thursday's paper. So we're, we're recruiting now for new business manager to fill Grant's position. Hopefully this, the candidate will, would be the right candidate to, to continue in the, in the position in emerged district.
And you and Roger are on that search committee, so.
Yeah, we've, we're, we're screening candidates. We've met as a group to come up with screening criteria. We're meeting Thursday night to screen candidates and then we start interviews the following week, two nights next week. So, yeah, it's full, full throttle. Busy time. The only other addition, Kim, is, you know, there's been a lot, there's a lot of work going on internally in a number of areas. Pre-K twelve curriculum instruction and assessment, the merger of the two special ed student support services programs, the finding HR and financial software. SIS, the student information system, everything we have, one of it, you know, we have two of everything. The whole leadership structure, I've been facilitating meetings with members of their leadership, executive leadership team around bringing our principals on board and how to start thinking about not going right towards structures and systems and when we're gonna meet, but more about sort of a values-based conversation about what we believe in leadership. What are we, you know, what are we hoping for in a merger, and what do we wonder about, and what are we concerned about? All of those sort of, just trying to come to a general sense of what our beliefs are. And I really have always believed that principals are the greatest leverage in systems change. And so before we even start thinking about how to bring a PLC model to a bigger system, we have to have a very strong commitment from our building and district leaders that we're on the same sheet of music and that's gonna take some time. So I think over at least this next year, that's gonna be the work that I look forward to facilitating. When the new superintendent comes on, we also need to leave some latitude and not bind that person into, you know, here's the structure. Welcome aboard, but to provide some opportunity for that person to think about, given his or her experience to help shape a new system going forward. But the leadership piece for me is just tantamount to our sustainability. Because if you just jump into, let's just do this program that we do here over here, it's just, it'll, it won't get traction, guarantee it. And we've all, we all know how different it is in terms of just the way the leadership structure is, not good or bad, they're just different. And we've got to spend time getting our heads wrapped around how to make those changes.
One of the things that rang so true out of all of this was pretty remarkable, and I don't know if that's a place to start a conversation, but to hear Kevin speak about the difference then versus now, to have them speak about the impact of the PLCs. Like, I loved the question about whether Common Core drives this or what it is, because Common Core has its own bad rap. But this work of having teachers working on common things at common times aligns perfectly with the PLC work, aligns perfectly with the principals feeling as though they're in collaboration for the whole journey of the student. feeling as though they're in collaboration for the whole journey of the student. It is so powerful to listen to the people who've gone through this transition, speak of the impact for kids, that I'm hopeful, Mark, that maybe as colleagues, they have an opportunity to share that. Not in a, I don't walk away from it thinking anything other than sort of pride in the effort and the result, not a, we're better, we're ahead, we're, you know, obviously, that's something to be sensitive to, and sharing with other leaders. But I think until you, you have to know that that effort is worth it. It was a leap of faith in some ways, for people to have bought onto that six years ago, and follow you through that process. Yet, there isn't one person whom I've spoken with that would give that up.
Boy.
There's not a chance.
They won't, they won't work under any other conditions.
They won't. And so, and they won't for the reasons that we just witnessed on those stories of those kids. And so, it's so powerful. I hope that that voice will get to come to the table.
The more time we spend with our colleagues, I think more of that is, is people are sort of grasping that, you know, that, that, what, what's happening.
Yeah.
In the future, I feel bad for, you know, he, Kevin has a lot to say, and he gets nervous, especially it's at the end, and he just, he goes through it too quickly. So next time, I'm gonna start with Kevin, because if we can just slow it down, you're gonna hear many more things that come out of what's happening at EMS, and, so.
Well, they
He always just goes last.
I know.
I'm gonna flip that.
Yeah. Well, I do think, too, in some ways, they may be later to the, to the data wall, but this notion of working as a team
They were.
Is something that that building has done. So their teams, you know, now they're aligned in a way that they're getting similar content at similar times across eighth grade teams or seventh grade teams, and that's awesome. This is about equity for kids. This is why we care about any of this, because it's about equity for kids, and opportunities for kids, and the journey of the student. That's, that's why we jump on this as being, yes, this is actually working, thank you for figuring out how to make it work. But I think that in some ways, also, that working together as colleagues is something they've done, you know, traditionally, where maybe the lower grades have worked maybe more in isolation, where in the upper grades, they have been on team as a middle school for a while. So maybe some of it doesn't feel that different, and it's harder to sort of articulate where the differences are. But I, I thought he made it very clear in his response to, to Dan, what's working about that, and that, you guys have been doing it for a long time, Common Core supports that.
Yeah.
But it wasn't the driver.
I would have added that it has helped.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has helped.
Thank you. We will certainly keep you guys posted as things are happening, we've got another meeting tomorrow night, so.
First and second, first and Thursday, Tuesday, every night, every week, sorry of the month.
First and Thursday, every week.
Every week, wow. Well, I will say, in all honesty, Mark and I took a look at May to see if there was a way to consolidate the meetings for our group, to do one meeting in May instead of two. And we really saw there to be some big monitoring reports coming up, treatment of students and families, treatment of staff, and those take enough time, and then we each, we have a monitor report on each of those nights, too, so we did not feel as though we could do that, and also get to the superintendent evaluation component, that we've been intentional to wait on, let's, let's not bash ourselves too badly for the fact it's not in March. But I think that Mark and I will figure whether that is the ninth or the 23rd, and I will get to you guys before then the rubric, or the, the matrix chart of the monitoring reports. And then the other components of it will be able to complete when Mark has shared his reflection on his progress of, on his goals. So that is, I think we're probably on to the next agenda items stuff anyway. That's what we looked at when we looked at May, and we figured we actually really couldn't make it one meeting. We tried.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I, does Lauren send the agenda for the consolidated meeting to everybody, too?
Did you guys get it, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was like
Yeah, but you might, I mean, you might decide you have nothing to do on a Tuesday night, you wanna join us.
If you don't find it helpful, I mean, we just, I felt it was during the transition helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, I glance at it, and I think that's helpful, just to kind of
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna inspire me to jump up to a meeting, but it is nice to, it, it helps understand what's going on.
Stand a little bit.
Yeah.
And we are still working together to plan agendas, Martha, myself, and Mark get
together to do that. And they're full, there's a lot to cover, and to sort of be thoughtful and intentional, in, in a little bit of an absence of a work plan, although we, some of our retreat work worked on what needs to get done, we thought, in what timeframes, and it clusters pretty tightly around everything now, but, you know. So we are trying to be pretty thoughtful about those agendas, and I appreciate being able to be part of that planning, too.
Andrew, any meeting until the fourth?
It's the fourth, yep.
And that's at the high school?
At the high school. And that one will be in the auditorium. The, all the meetings between now and the fall, that the regular board meetings will be held at the high school. We were going to be alternating them back and forth between the space and the high school space, and frankly, the setup is not as conducive here as the space that they can manipulate at the learning center at the high school. And so, you know, people are not flooding the place anyway, so. But we are working to try and have, hopefully, RETN join us for those.
Are you getting guests?
No, we didn't have a soul.
Okay. Just curious.
In fact, our friends at RETN do partner with Lake Champlain Access, did I have that right?
Yeah.
And we're in touch with them today, and they believe they can cover the remaining meetings between the two of them, one or the other. We can't, folks in Westford can't access RETN, or can't, our residents can't, can't hit Channel 16 up there, but they can share data files, so hopefully we'll have that, we'll have that covered, yeah.
All right. So, I think we hit on future agenda. I will say, I'm gonna, if I can tell you guys who did the last monitoring reports, and what we have coming up. So we have 4.2 coming up on the ninth, Cashel did it last, and that's board job description. And then 4.5 is coming up on the 23rd, Dan did that last, and that's board member code of conduct.
Want to switch?
Yeah, I think I'm, oh, go, go for it.
Okay.
You guys are so
I was gonna say, boy, sounds like I'm up for one, but no, all right.
We could just swap with each other, Dan. But, I mean, Rachel, if you're offering, I'm, I'm due to do one.
I just throw down under the bus, I feel a little guilty.
Cashel will take 4.5, for sure.
Yeah.
Rock, paper, scissors, 4.2?
[laughing]
Oh, wait.
Whoa.
Wait, 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 one, two, three, go.
Three, go.
Okay, one, two, three, go.
Dang.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
This is great.
Okay.
Okay. Well, you did get rid of the clerk job, so there's that.
I, that's what I was
And Dan will have to help me probably with the superintendent evaluation, so.
Oh.
I'm sure there's plenty of work to be divvied up among us.
4.5.
So I'm 4.5, you're 4.2.
Job description.
4.2. 4.2 for Rachel, and that is first. So that is for May 9th. And then, 4.5 for Cashel, and that is May 23rd. Thank you guys very much. And the work calendar, I think we've looked and done what we can do about that. I think we've got in June, high school kids coming, Mark, so, awesome. I'm pretty sure high school kids can probably solve all the problems in the world, as far as I can tell. I think, we, I look forward to us asking them their thoughts on stuff, all the more as we're a unified district, because I think they have great insight, and I think that's a check on what we think we're doing, and how we think it's going.
The community engagement series led by our grant with Nellie May, starts this week, Sue McCormick and her colleague, what colleague's name?
Um, I'm forgetting his name.
Yes.
We'll be visiting our three middle schools and the high school, interviewing staff and students to start getting a sense of their hopes and dreams, and, yeah, student voice will be very much part of the work.
And teacher voice, as well as principal leader, so it's really, I'm, I'm really, Alex, that's right, I'm very excited to see that get going, and we're grateful to have the support of Nellie May to get that going. So do we have some thoughts on the takeaways?
I think it'd be good to put the link to the blog.
Yep, I put that in, I just emailed it.
Yay.
Did you, were you able to call it up?
Uh, I didn't try, actually, but let me see.
I did.
Yep, it works.
Okay, good.
Comes up, no problem. But I did put that in there to include the link to that page, obviously a link to the minutes, and hopefully a link to Orin's story.
Yeah, I'll check Orin's story tomorrow.
Um, and do you want me to just read what I typed up?
Yes.
Um, so on August, or on August, on April 25th, the board had the privilege of hearing from various educators and staff for a second trimester progress report, is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. "We heard how various data is used to engage ETSD colleagues in conversations about how to successfully teach our students. The purpose of the data collected is truly to inform process and to enable and empower students to succeed. Three teachers shared with us a story of a student's learning path. These stories express the significance and value of a team approach in moving students forward, both academically and socially. This presentation is among the board's most enjoyed presentations throughout the year. To hear firsthand how our teams collaborate to lead our students along the path to success is such a rewarding experience, please visit the links below for more information."
Do you have, well, don't you do that tonight?
Yeah. [laughing] I promise I will post this promptly.
I would like to think of that now.
I just want, and it's
Yeah, I know, that don't want to wait, and then
I'm like, I'll come back to you in an hour, read it and see if I made sense.
That was, I mean, that captures all of it for me.
She's got it.
I thought that was great.
Good. This one's easy, because it's
I know.
It's a sexy subject, you know, it's like, what, it's the whole point of all of this, by the way.
Yeah.
So it makes it really Exactly. Fun to share it. Well, I will post that up as soon as we confirm sharing the story, and the minutes are public on Wednesday.
Awesome. That is perfect, then. I think that we are probably ready for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion, we adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
I pass this by zero, thank you, 8:47.